Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Pullman and Whitman County Forum for Pullman School Board, District Four and District Five. We begin all our meetings with the reading of our nonpartisan statement. If you're interested and want to take a closer look, we have a copy you can take a picture of. The League acts in support of or in opposition to selected governmental issues which its members have studied. It does not support or oppose candidates, factions, or political parties. League members as individuals are urged to work in the political party of their choice. To protect the League's nonpartisan policy guidelines regarding the political activities of the Board of Directors are reviewed frequently. The League of Women Voters of Pullman is fully committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion in principle and practice. These concepts are central to our current and future success in engaging all individuals, households, communities, and policymakers in creating a more perfect democracy. We acknowledge and honor the sovereignty of the First Peoples of the Palouse Region and their descendants, including our neighbors, the Menemspur, the Nimmipu, the Palouse Tribes, the Confederated Tribes of the Cavil Reservation, and the Cordelaine Tribe. We will not be taking questions from the audience for this primary forum, but encourage all of you to contact the candidates with your concerns. Many questions were submitted ahead of time, and we will get to as many as possible. Please silence your phones. I will do that right now myself. And there is no clapping or booing during these presentations. The candidates will have two minutes for opening and closing remarks, and one minute to answer each question. A timekeeper is in the front row, and I will be really a time Nazi. So if I tell you to stop, I might allow you to finish your sentence, I might not. The candidates for District Four are Dina... Okay, I'll let you say that. Ben and Hannah, who is not present. The candidates for District Five are Tina, Stephanie... Oh, sorry, Tina dropped out. Stephanie, Brandon, and Amanda. Okay, yeah, gotcha. We're going to start with opening statements now, and Dina gets to start.
Thank you very much. My name is Dina Bayumi. I am running for school board candidate in District Four. I am a longtime resident of Pullman, and it relocated back to Pullman about 11 years ago. I have two children in the school district currently. I firmly believe that Pullman Public Schools are a great asset to this community, as important and as vital as WSU or SEL. I know that many people, including my own family, have elected to stay in Pullman because of the great education and the quality of life that it affords our children. With that said, I think that with any good school system, you can do better. And I feel that in the last several years, we've encountered some real issues in the way that the school board has understood its roles and responsibilities in relation to the community and to the superintendent. Many people who have gone to speak and raise concerns in front of the school board have been met with indifference or inaction and feel dismissed, and I think this is a consequence of the school board not being accountable to the public and not being responsive to their concerns and worries. I think that in order to be a good board member, you have to effectively represent the people, and it requires a willingness and ability to scrutinize information and not just confer approval to the superintendent.
Hi, my name's Ben Emerson. I'm a lifelong Pullman resident, aside from one miserable year I lived in Botha, Washington, student-teaching in Everett. I'm sixth generation Whitman County. My daughter would be seventh. She goes to Franklin Elementary School. I went to Pullman Public Schools K through 12, which include Gladish, because that's where kindergarten was at the time. I was part of Camp Jefferson, which was when we took all the Jefferson kids. I went to the old Franklin, which is now the district office. My freshman year of high school, it was a series of tunnels because a graduating senior tried to torch the library, and I saw all sorts of excellent leadership through some absolutely crazy times. I was in sixth grade when Columbine happened, freshman when 9/11 happened, and throughout all of the... Well, it seemed insane at the time, but now it's just run-of-the-mill in terms of society. I had excellent educators in my life, some on the sports field, the basketball court, but every day in the classroom. And Pullman School District is a really good district, especially relative to a lot of the rest of the country, but that doesn't mean it can't be better. It can't do some things better. And in talking to a lot of educators, recently retired or making lateral moves to other districts, it seems like there's some easily addressable issues. I'm not going to say it's awful leadership, because it's working for the most part, but it could be a little bit better. I'm a farmhand. I work for the Clark family, and you probably know Julie. She's a former teacher of mine. And I guess the analogy I would use is sometimes on my semi-truck, I have to change a tire, and it's not because it blew out, it's because the tread's all gone. It's no longer doing what it needs to be doing, and you can't count on it. And I kind of look at the school board similarly, where it's not a total blowout, it just needs new tread.
Okay. Is this thing on? My name is Stephanie Horn. I came here in 1992 to go to WSU, go Cougs. I'm a die-hard Coug, have been my whole life. I left for four years. They weren't quite as miserable as living in Everett, but I was gone for four years, and I came back, and I've been back since 2009. Raised four kids here, and one of the reasons I had to get back to Pullman was for our schools. I love our schools. We have wonderful schools, and they're wonderful because of the people that work there. I know that firsthand. I was an employee of Pullman School District for about 10 years. I started off as a substitute, and then I took over in our special education preschool, which used to be at Sunnyside. I loved that. I loved special ed. But then I had the opportunity to move... That's when it was at Sunnyside, I had the opportunity to move to first grade over at Jefferson, and that's where my kids went. So I kind of jumped on that. And I was at Jefferson, love, love, loved it. And then I moved when Cameac opened. So that's where I kind of ended my teaching career in the elementary education classroom. I taught first grade after I left special education. I loved everybody I ever worked with, loved all my coworkers. Anyway, I was very active. I'm active in the community, but when I was still a teacher, I was very active in the teachers' union. I got to work very closely with administration during COVID, which was a nightmare. And I think Bob and I, I see him in the back, probably still have PTSD from going through that whole experience. Already, gosh, I talk too much. I'll say more later, in progress.
Good evening. I'm Brandon Frigga, and I'm a parent of two students. They're here in the audience tonight. My daughter Olivia is entering fifth grade, and my son David is entering second grade. My wife is a longtime district employee, over 17 years, and she's held a few different roles in that time. And during that time, I've had the opportunity to volunteer with field trips and things for my kids, Field Day, things like that. I've also been a volunteer softball coach alongside my wife, and I've been a Ph.S. football, wrestling, basketball announcer, scoreboard operator. And I just enjoy being involved in the school district and things that are going on. I value our educators. They're such an important part of my kids' lives, and yours too, and how they're brought up and what they're taught. And I come from a family of educators. My mom's a teacher, my dad's been a coach for all of my childhood and life, so I've grown up around public schools. I'm a firm believer in public schools, and I'm an advocate for them. As my kids began school, I naturally became more interested in the decisions the school board was making. The fact that the COVID-19 pandemic was in full swing about that time only heightened, you know, kind of that sense of things, and the direction that the board and the district was taking on things and decisions they were making. Less than a year and a half ago, the financial health of the district really took quite a turn, and because of that, my perspective on it was we went from a happy-go-lucky, you know, school that everything's going great, to stop the coffee machines, cancel the field trips, cancel the activities. And that shift and that drastic nature just really caught my attention and really perked up, and that's really when I got interested in like, hey, maybe I should really consider, you know, try to put my name in and put my hat on the ring for a school board. And so it's through those experiences, and last fall, I started attending meetings. I've been regularly going just to try and get a better pulse of how the board operates, educate myself on what the role entails. And so that's why I'm here, and I'd love the opportunity to earn your vote.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Amanda Tanner, and I am currently the vice president of the Board of Directors for the Pullman Public School District. I'm in my second term, so I've been in for about seven and a half years. And my journey started when my own children started school, just like many of these other folks. My oldest was going into first grade at the time, so I also wanted to become more involved in knowing how the district operated and be a part of making decisions that I felt were important for all students in the district. At that time, the Board of Directors was mostly people that didn't... No longer had students in the district, and I wanted to be a parent voice. It has now switched, and I think that four out of five of us have students in the district, and so it's a totally different dynamic, and I've enjoyed each one of the stages that we've had so far. I would like to continue being on the school board because I offer the experience that I've devoted for the last seven and a half years, and I would like to continue serving our community and our students. I am a passionate advocate for quality education while still having financial stability. I would like to support students that have special education needs as well as their families, which is something that we are continuing to work on and improve, as well as focusing on academic growth for all of our students. One of the things that we have had to focus on the last five years since the pandemic is learning recovery, and we are finding success with that, but it is something that we need to continue to focus on. And I believe in a collaborative approach with the community as well as parents and everybody who works within the district. Thank you.
Thank you all. We're going to start the questions now. I will read the question, and we'll change who starts, gets to go first each time, so nobody gets picked down as being first always. But Dina, you're up first for this first one, and you have one minute to answer. What is your opinion about the relative importance of activities versus academics, and how would you fund both?
I think that activities are necessary to enrich the education that our students receive. I think that it contributes to social emotional learning and generally, socialization of In terms of funding, you know, I will admit that I am not sure how exactly I would fund that. That's kind of a very large question and difficult to really address in probably about 10 seconds, but I will admit that that's something that I'm willing to look into and something that I think is necessary in order to provide a balanced education for students in this district.
Okay, Ben, same question? Yes. What is your opinion about the relative importance of activities versus academics, and how would you fund each?
All right. Thinking of the quote, maybe it was Twain, "I never let my schooling get in the way of my education." I believe activities and athletics are both essential to creating well-rounded and interested adults. I think with a lot of kids I've coached and a lot of my peers, if they didn't have football, they don't really give a damn about their English grade, but because they had football, man, they're going to go ahead and read My Antonia, or one of those other riveting novels from Sophomore English. So I think it's essential. In terms of funding it, one thing Pullman School District does a terrible job of my entire life is alumni outreach, and I think a good way to do that is... I'm thinking there's no cheerleading in the wintertime. I could probably find you 50 cheerleaders that would give you $10 a month, and they'd probably do it all year round, and you could probably hire another cheer coach to supplement that and pay for the buses and get the insurance. And I think you just have to ask people that got a lot of value from those activities to pay it forward.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Activities versus academics? I don't think that's a versus thing. I think each is essential, kind of as the previous candidates have already talked about. If you don't have activities, and that's not just sports, that's also clubs, which is something our school district has an amazing choice... Amazing... What am I trying to say? Amazing set of choices for sports and activities. The way that I would fund those, there's not enough money for everything, right? I mean, we're pretty lucky. We still have a music program. There's a lot of schools, even in Washington State, that don't have music, they don't have art. We still have those. Alumni outreach, that's something I've also thought about, but also there's grants. That's one thing I've thought a lot about. When I was working on my undergrad, we did a lot of practice with writing grants. So that can be something for teachers whose time is already very limited, but they have the support and maybe some coaching if they could do that.
Yeah, so again, resounding the things that these candidates have already said, I think co-curricular is the right way to put it. They go hand-in-hand. Activities and athletics, as been pointed out, they keep the students engaged in the classroom, those that aren't. And some students are great. They love the classroom, and they thrive there, but other people, everyone's different. There's diversity, and you need both things to keep everyone involved. And the life skills that are learned, being on a team and partaking in competition, it's so important, and it helps a person develop into an adult and give them success moving out into life, into the workplace, and everything, even into raising a family. And, you know, you have to be a team with your spouse and your kids. And as far as funding goes, great ideas here, reaching out to the community, using the boosters, using alumni, things like that. But also, you have to look at the whole budget and weigh things out. In 60 seconds, it's pretty hard to put a cap on that, but, you know, item by item, you make choices.
Amanda?
I would agree with everybody up here that it is not a versus, it's an and. And I believe that our first priority is to educate our students. We are a school, and we need to walk the fine line of balancing that with activities and athletics. And like Stephanie pointed out, it is not just athletics. It is all of the clubs that are offered at all four of our elementary schools. It's all the programs that are offered at our middle school with intermurals, and a lot of those are currently worked on with volunteers. And we need to continue trying to find creative solutions to offer as many options to our students as possible. But first is academics curriculum and keeping our staff and teachers employed. Those are priorities with budget.
Thank you. We're going to start the next question with Ben. He already was anticipating it. Are you informed about the policies and procedures currently in place for handling challenges from the community, such as about curriculum and library materials?
Curriculum and library. Okay. Full disclosure, I went to college education. I got my degree in 2009, so everything I learned about education was about the PISL, the positive impact on student learning. All my curriculum design had to do with ELLARS. I'm pretty sure neither of those things are the thing anymore. We have new names, new acronyms, there's probably a new training session we all get to take to learn the new things, but essentially, the new things, the old things, they're remarkably similar. It's more a guiding philosophy to me. Are we making decisions that have a positive impact on student learning? Yes or no? Is this a decision we have to make right now, or is this a timeline where we can maybe kick the can down the road? Sometimes that's the case, sometimes it's immediate. And on a case-by-case basis, I think you can look at it and make the proper decisions with the full scope, because that's kind of a broad question, but if you're narrowing it down to any one of them... One time's up.
Stephanie?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Are you informed about the policies and procedures currently in place for handling challenges from the community about such things as curriculum and library materials?
Okay, that's what I thought you said. So I had the opportunity as an educator to be on committees that got to review curriculums. Parents were invited in, if I remember correctly, for thoughts, opinions. We try, as a district, we've always tried to invite parents, you know, especially for like calendar committee, things like that. As far as library, actually, I am not... Don't feel as informed, and I'm not sure why I don't after teaching for the district for 10 years. But, you know, that brings up a point for me. Our communication in this district is what I feel needs the most help. And that's not just between teachers and administration, that is teachers, administration, and the public. Feel like there needs to be a lot more, which is why maybe I'm feeling not as informed as I should be right now about the policies that guide that communication.
Thank you. Brandon?
So I've not reviewed the policies directly. I do feel a bit informed on them in knowing that there are curriculum committees that review material, and then, you know, presentations are made to the board, and approval is done by the board for curriculum. Now, as far as challenges being raised about something in curriculum, I think it would be, you know, you have to take things on a case-by-case basis, and especially, you know, with library materials, like the district librarian is going to be involved in that conversation, and I would defer, you know, to the administrators and the people on staff that have knowledge firsthand, you know, experience with, hey, how was that particular book selected? You know, what criteria were used to do it? And now, let's look at this challenge and understand, you know, what the challenge is, and then base the decision off of that. So that's my understanding of how it should operate, but again, I have not reviewed the particular policies.
Amanda?
Yes, so for curriculum adoption, as was mentioned, we do have a curriculum committee that is comprised of district administrators as well as administrators from the various buildings, as well as teachers and staff, and a board member, at least one board member is present for all of their meetings. It is presented that we may need some new curriculum, and then there is research that is done on some curriculums that might meet the needs that we need for our students. Those curriculums are then piloted by the grades that they would affect, and then that group that has piloted the project brings it forward to the curriculum advisory committee with a, this is working really well, or this isn't working so well, and then we go back to the drawing board of if we would like to move forward with adopting it, or if we would like to try a different curriculum. As far as library materials, we do have a head district librarian who is in charge of the materials that are in each of our libraries, and I'm grateful that we live in a pretty open-minded community where we haven't had an issue with any of the materials that we have in our libraries so far in my tenure on the board.
Dina?
Over the last several years, there have been numerous community members who have made public comments at board meetings regarding different issues, none specifically addressing library books, but certainly different types of concepts and policies regarding curriculum. And they've had issues, and I think that it is obviously necessary to incorporate people's opinions and understand where everybody in the community stands. However, I think most of it, and I do feel fairly familiar with the policies, is largely guided either by the state and then by the school district itself. And there are rules in place regarding what is appropriate, what is not appropriate, what should be included, and what should not be included. And the deference is given to the professionals in place who understand what the students' needs are.
Thank you. This next question, Stephanie, you're up. What would you do to ensure special education is covered and students with special needs receive the full support needed to succeed at all levels of schooling?
So I've been in this. I've been in the trenches with this one when Dr. Maxwell came to Pullman School District. He was my boss. I directly reported to him when I was teaching special education because he was the assistant Special education is an ever-changing, very fluid topic, and it's not just a topic, it's children and their lives and their families' lives. And it's one of the most important parts of our school district, is to give these kids the minutes that they deserve and that they are supposed to get as mandated by the state and federal government. The way to make that happen, like I said, is ever-changing, and it has... It's an individual... You have to address each individual need, and those change all the time.
Thank you. Brandon?
Well, I certainly don't have the experience that Stephanie does in that, but my wife actually started out her career as a special education teacher, and then so by proxy, I've been close to it and know that the time and the hours that is put into that and the requirements that are put on that. And that was quite a few years ago that she was in that, and as Stephanie said, it's fluid and it's changing all the time. So I know that it's vastly different now than it even was when my wife was a special education teacher. But yes, I mean, individual needs, we've got to take every student and their needs and figure out how we can apply to them. They need parent educators, they need a plan, they need an IEP, whatever it might be. Evaluate those needs and case-by-case deal with them, and it has to be a forefront of the budget, and it's... They're students too, and the students come first. That's where it starts.
Thank you. Amanda?
This is quite a hot topic. So ensuring special education is covered, there are... So ensuring special education is covered, there are limits in some ways based on what funding we receive from the state. Special education is one of the top three priorities that we went to the legislators with this past legislative session to improve funding on. We're not getting a lot of movement or support from the state, unfortunately. So we have to take it upon ourselves to find ways to prioritize it for ourselves. There is always room for improvement, we are always trying to do better. We have an excellent director of special education who is trying to work on more oversight within the buildings. And every student deserves a quality education and an opportunity for academic growth, which is something that we are continuing to focus on. Thank you.
Dina.
I think any parent who has a child or children with special needs in the district can tell you that this is an area that has room for improvement. I think the first thing to really be addressed is greater collaboration with the families, with students who have and need additional resources. And a greater focus on equity in funding to the schools that have greater populations of students who need those additional resources rather than equality. There are two schools in particular, at the elementary level at least, where there is a greater need, a much greater need for additional resources and assistance for teachers and students who have special needs. And that means not providing equal allocations of funding, but equitable.
Thank you. Ben.
This is one of those where you're required by law, you know, an IEP, as far as I understand it, my daughter has an IEP, she has speech therapy. And I had an IEP growing up, although at that point I don't think it was called an IEP, I also received speech therapy. And I talk mostly normal now as a result, but it took a lot of work from Ms. Wilborn, a lot of work, and I wasn't always good to work with. My daughter might be guilty of that too at the time, currently. We don't really have an issue with our, personally, we haven't had any issue aside from the fact that this spring, talking about our IEP for next year, none of the adults in that room are in those roles next year. So we have this document that everyone agreed to, but now we're going to have a new speech therapist and we're going to have a new principal. And so why do we have that meeting if suddenly the rules are going to change? Yes, we are required to have the meeting, but are we really having a meeting if no one that can do anything about it down the line is present? I don't know. But generally speaking, special education, I mean, that's the law. You got, that's, that's a community that you have to do everything by law, you're required to do it. So if you're not doing it, I need a really good reason why.
Thank you. Brendan, you're up for this one, starting. What is your position on student cellphone use during the school day? And should there be different rules for different grade levels?
So cell phones and technology, obviously a big thing, more kids have them all the time, screen time is a huge issue, whether it's the TV, it's an iPad, it's a cellphone, or even a smartwatch. I do think different age levels of kids, there's an appropriateness to that. So yes, from one grade level to another, I think high schoolers, you know, are going to be able to manage that a little bit different. But the levels need to be set and I think that there could be some discretion for teachers during, you know, what, depending on what they're teaching and what they're doing and what's happening. Is it time where the kids are working on their stuff or is it during instruction? Do I think a cellphone should be out during instruction? Absolutely not. That doesn't make sense, you know, that's a distraction and it takes away from the learning environment. So if it's something like a tool that can be used during the school day, I think, and it's appropriate for the age, yeah. Do elementary schoolers need to have a cellphone? I don't think so, but some of them do, you know, and have smart devices and things like that. And so curbing that by age level, I think that's appropriate.
Thank you. My, should I go? Start, I'm sorry.
My position on student cellphone use is, I don't think they should be in the classroom, especially at the elementary school level. This past academic year, we were able, the board was passed a policy saying that there will be no cellphones available for elementary school age students during the school day. If they need to, if they need to communicate with their parents, this phone is always available in the office. And so far, it's going quite well, it's less of a distraction. At the middle school level, it's similar rules, we're still working through it a little bit, those early teenagers are a little bit tricky. At the high school level, we are also finding success because they don't have them during the classroom, during teaching time unless there's a special assignment in which administrators are let know ahead of time. But they're also not pulling them out at lunch as much and they're socializing a little bit more and they're doing all of those things that are so important to do at school.
Thank you. Dina.
So believe it or not, I have a fifth grader, a soon-to-be fifth grader, who has, for two years now, already started lobbying for a cellphone, which amazes me. But I can tell you what I think has guided me personally and I think works for the schools as well, which is go with what the research shows regarding screens and not just cellphones, but the watches as well. I would say that the guidance shows that cellphone usage in schools is, it actually harms students and affects their learning. I think that's at any age. And as long as students have access, because there are students who need to contact parents or need to get in touch with people in case of emergency, as long as they have access to those phones or devices, I think that that is perfectly fine.
Ben.
I know we're talking about cellphones and screens, but to date myself, when I was in high school, it was iPod shuffles and not listening to music. Mr. Fluster and I had many disagreements about whether or not we should be able to listen to music while we're doing the work. That's neither here nor there. In elementary school, it was Tamagotchis. And when you had your Tamagotchi, which was a little electric pet and you'd take care of it, and Ms. Sauer, Mr. Wilson, they all hated it and they'd take it from you. And at the end of the day, you didn't get it back. You got it back when your parent showed up to the school and claimed it for you. So for some people, you might get it the day of, but if your dad was my dad, that thing died in Ms. Yount's desk in 1997 probably. And that's just how it goes. In this regard, if it's having a negative impact on student learning, if it's in a locker room or in a bus, or if it's, if it's going to be an issue checking it at the door, I mean, kids have lockers, they have phone, or they have, they have lockers, a lot of them have automobiles, they have backpacks. I think you have really cleared out, like drawn out consequences. Hey, if you're using your phone during class, we're taking it to the office and it's going to stay there until your parent comes and gets it. And I guarantee a parent's going to make one, maybe two trips before that problem is probably going to be sorted out on a case by case basis.
Okay, I'm going to cut you off right there.
Okay, well, first of all, you're adorable because the screen time to me was when they rolled the TV in on the cart and we got to walk. Okay, I'm wasting time. You're very cute. Yeah. I currently am a field supervisor for WSU, for the College of Education, and I am in the classrooms at all the schools. I'm at Pullman High School, Lincoln Middle School, I'm at all four elementary schools, I go to Garfield Palouse, I go, I'm all around Whitman County and I love it because it's a part-time job that I wanted, part of the reason I left the district. And they've gotten really creative at Pullman School District about storing the phones for the students as they come in and out of the classroom. I don't want cellphones in the classroom, I don't think they need to be there. Kids get enough screen time, unfortunately, when they're at home, usually they're babysat by their screens at home. At school, I want as much FaceTime with my students as possible for all of the reasons and more that everybody's already, already mentioned.
Okay. Amanda, way down at the end, you get to start this time. Recently, there has been conflict between Washington State policy and federal executive orders regarding trans, regarding allowing transgender athletes to participate in school sports. How would you respond?
So we as school board directors are held to Washington State law. So as long as Washington State law says that they are able to participate, we will allow them to participate. If Washington State law changes their stance, then we as school board directors must follow the law, so we would also need to change our stance. This is not the type of topic that a school board director is able to act on their own personal belief. This is something where we are required to follow the law regardless of what the law is.
Thank you. Dina.
Could you repeat that?
Oh, okay, you would like me to read the longest one. Recently, there has been conflict between Washington State policy and federal executive orders regarding allowing transgender athletes to participate in school sports. How would you respond?
I would respond very similarly like to Amanda, actually. I mean, this is a policy issue where you have a state battling the federal government in which you receive money from both. And it's a tenuous position. And as an individual, I might have my own opinion. As a board member, I am dictated to act on behalf of the public, which means that I follow the laws, whichever those may be. And, you know, individual opinion can be separated from what your responsibility is holding the position that you hold, so.
Ben.
I'll echo kind of the general sentiment here, obviously, the law is the law. Personally, though, I'll just say how I feel about it. I coached girls' basketball in Colton for 15 years. We scream at the boys multiple times a week and it wasn't the girls that were having trouble with it. We beat the boys, it was the same rules, you play the game and we're better, so we win. And I'm, I think in sports and activities, you talk a lot about the platitudes and who you're competing against shouldn't dictate whether or not you can give it your best or you're going to be a worse teammate today because the other team has some sort of boogeyman that we have to worry about. I think the rules are the rules, you follow them. But generally speaking, this is a very small, small portion of the population and it takes almost nothing to accommodate them. And I do believe that the platitudes in sports are the things that matter where it's not all about winning. And if you go out and you set a PR at the state tournament in the 400, that's awesome, you did the best you could. Now, someone else might do better, but that doesn't impact that you didn't do the best you could. So to me, it's just a boogeyman.
Yeah, I'm just, I agree with everything that's been said already. The only thing that I would say is, you know, it's kind of the division of church and state, you do have to go with what the law says and you have to include every child, every student. So we follow the law, we make sure we include students and we make sure that they are not bullied or that they are not treated any differently. Like Ben just mentioned, it's a very, very small population, but they're human beings and we've got to treat all of our students right.
Brendan.
So this is a, this is a really difficult topic to talk about, I think, for a lot of people. And I do think, you know, people need to be included, but I think that there's standards that should be set. And just last year, my daughter was in third grade and we were evaluating whether she should play softball in the league that's designed for third to fifth graders, recognizing that a third grader and a fifth grader, there's a big size difference there. And so for us, we decided that that's not an option because we didn't think it was the right safety issue. And so I think when biological males are playing against biological females, I think safety concerns are raised there and I do struggle with that. I'm not trying to not include anyone, but I think that there's safety and there's the game and there's comfort and there's locker room problems and there are things, yet there are ways to accommodate and work around those things. And when the state law is what it is, we have to follow the state law. We do have to follow that and I will acknowledge that. But I do believe that there are ways to lobby the state to change the laws and I do believe that the school does often lobby the state for things that they want to see changed.
Thank you. Dina, you're up for this one. It's important for the school board to know and support the entire school community, students, teachers, staff, and the community at large. Do you have any ideas how to achieve this?
To offer support to all the constituents. This is actually something that I have thought quite a bit about because I do feel that there are populations where we are not doing enough to reach out to underrepresented groups in this community. And I think that that means communication, but not in the sense that we've heard it before where it's one way, where we send out a survey and perhaps receive responses and then nothing may come of it. It means actually engaging and listening to community members who may not feel comfortable with participating, you know, in a school board comment or public comment. And it means really getting to know different types of people in order to listen to the needs and the requirements that they have.
Thank you. Huh? Okay. It's important for the school, for a school board to know and support the entire school community, students, faculty, staff, and the community at large. Do you have any ideas how to achieve this goal?
I think historically, every time I've emailed the school board, and it's not just the current school board, going back to probably 2005 would be the first time I sent an email to the school board, the form letter getting back is often what I usually receive, which is pretty useless when you're trying to get a direct answer to a direct question. I think you can have form letters for people to provide you information, but then it's paramount that you follow up on that information. Because I'll be honest, when I see the public comment in school board meetings, usually there's all these iceberg statements where it's like, well, I gotta, I would love to ask some follow-ups on something I just heard. And I think asking your faculty and your staff, not just your certified, but also your classified, and you can get all sorts of very useful data, like how come this building, all the principal, or the principal seems to hate all the janitors at this building, but this principal gets along really well with the janitors? Or maybe it's the paraproses, or maybe it's the math teachers. But you can get all the data. And one thing I'd love to see Pullman School District do is exit interviews.
Thank you. Stephanie.
Well, this, for me, this goes back to what I mentioned earlier, that I think the biggest issue in our district right now is the lack of communication. And to kind of piggyback off of what Ben just mentioned, unfortunately, the 10 years that I was a teacher in the Pullman School District, I don't think I ever saw a board member come to the schools. I've talked to teachers recently and that still seems to be true. And that, that just goes directly to the point where we have this division. There's the us and there's the them, there's the district office and there's the schools. How can we get that to come together? A couple ideas I have, I love to bake, I want to show up at my school, whatever I'm assigned to, maybe others too, and show up once a month and bring coffee and baked goods and be available for a couple hours at the end of the school day, whatever works for that building. And I want to hear from the teachers, the staff, everybody. I also would like to do that with parents in the community, maybe at a coffee shop once a month. Better communication.
Thank you. Brendan.
Yeah, I kind of piggyback off what Stephanie and Ben are saying there. It's about making yourself available. And I've been fortunate through my, my wife and the colleagues that she has to meet a lot of different colleagues through the high school and just my involvement at the kids' school, they go to Franklin as well. kids' school, they go to Franklin as well, and getting to meet the teachers and being part of field day, and being part of those activities, and just talking, and just being a real person with them. And I think if, if I was elected to the board, I would want to continue to make myself available, and I would hope that they would feel comfortable talking to me, and that there wouldn't be any, you know, oh, he's a board member, I can't say anything. I, I would welcome their feedback. And I mean, there, there have been some things proposed at the last couple of school board meetings, how, how feedback could be addressed, how the board could hear things from staff. And, you know, Ben mentioned the idea of exit interviews. I, I think that there might be something there. You know, when people are leaving our district, I think it would be healthy to find out why. And quite honestly, I think that should be initiated by the administrators, if not the school board. Maybe the administrators first.
Thank you. Amanda?
Thank you. Communication is something that we are constantly talking about, reevaluating, trying to find better ways to communicate with everybody. We, this past year, we implemented community listening sessions. We had one in the fall and one in the spring. They were two different formats. We've gotten feedback that one of the formats was preferred over the other format. The school board plans to continue having those community listening sessions where it's a little bit more of an open dialogue. It is a little bit tricky because we are limited by the Open Public Meetings Act, where so many board members can't be together and have discussions without breaking that, that law. So, it does become a little bit tricky, but we are sending out surveys. We do evaluate the surveys. I have lots of constituent meetings, one-on-one, follow-up emails with those. I also know for a fact that board members have been attending staff meetings at every single building, as well as PTU, PTA booster meetings this year, as well as interacting with the ASP of high school.
Thank you. Ben? This one's up for you. Should all school board members receive training in the conduct of public meetings?
I'm a huge fan of parliamentary procedure. I have a degree in social studies. I love Robert's Rules of Order. I think they should be adhered to because it allows you to run a nice, efficient meeting, and people can come and go, and show up, and understand, when's old business, when's public comment, what do you mean, I have to sit through this report before I can talk? But yeah, having a nice little breakdown where everyone has the same understanding about how you'll conduct things, and how you'll review things, and how you'll can, how you'll go about the business, yeah, having a little session and getting on the same page. There's nothing wrong with doing that.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Absolutely. You know, I taught first grade, so, repeat it, first, second, I've taught first, second, third grade, special education. I've been in almost every single different grade level classroom as a sub, or even just, even what I do now, observing student teachers and, in their roles, and there just can never be enough repetition. And not everybody was a member of the FFA. I love the FFA, but I was not a part of that. I didn't, I didn't learn parley pro. I didn't go to competitions for it. So, yes, I would welcome any training that was ever offered me, but especially this. And maybe just, maybe that needs to go up on the, the school district website as well, like, hey, reminder for community members too, this is how parliamentary procedure works, or Robert's Rules of Orders, whichever one. I'm aware of them, and I know the general idea, because I've been to several different meetings where those, those procedures are used, but I love a good training.
Thank you. Brandon?
Yeah, I would also welcome the training. To, to be quite honest, I, I was never in FFA, and I didn't go through parliamentary procedure. My first real interaction with it, I, I used to work for Whitman County, and part of my job, I worked with the board of county commissioners, you know, every, every couple weeks I was in there visiting with them, with my boss, the public works director. And so, that was kind of my first engagement with seeing how, you know, the, the meeting process and things go. But I would be happy to learn more. I think it would be important, yes, for the whole board to know and understand, you know, the rules of order and, and how the meeting should be run, and how it's going to go, especially, especially new members to the board. But I, I also think too, that there just needs to be consistency in the application of the rules in the meetings, too. We need to make sure that, that we're always following the same expectations, and that it's very clear to those coming in the door, and, and who've already been there before, that the way this meeting's going to be run, and what should happen, and can happen, and what's acceptable and what isn't, and that it's just fairly applied.
Thank you. Amanda?
Thank you. Yes, it is a very different way of communicating when you are in a public meeting, and I 100% think that a training is useful. I usually have my little Cliff's Notes of Robert's Rules of Order sitting next to me in the meetings, just so that I can reference them if I have any questions about anything. I know that some other board members do that as well. Once you are voted onto the board, you are required to attend an open government training, which goes over a lot of the laws that you are required to follow as a school board member in the state of Washington, which is about a half a day training. And then you are also required to redo that training, I believe it's every 10 years, as well as you are required to attend a law conference that goes over the laws of the state and the laws that apply directly to you. So, training is always very useful. It's good for everybody to be aware. I actually grew up in an organization that used parliamentary procedures, so I was a little bit up to date before I started on the board.
Thank you. Dina?
Unlike Ben, I hate Robert's Rules of Orders, but that's just my personal opinion. But yes, I do believe that every board member should be trained, and it's because it, that these kinds of rules provide kind of an objective way of conducting oneself among other board members and with the public, so that everyone is consistently treated the same way, and there aren't any issues that can arise in the future.
Okay. This went faster than I anticipated, so I've got extra questions here. If you could make one change in the way things are done at the board level, what would it be? And that will be with Stephanie.
It's going to sound like a broken record, but communication. I, I just want to, I want more FaceTime for board members. I want that for the teachers. I want that to be, for board members to be more available in the community. I also, you know, the division, I mentioned a little bit ago, you know, the us versus them, where there, there's also the board, too. And it just seems so broken, where there's the board, and there's administration, and then there's the teachers and the staff. I want, I got up at a board meeting in 2018, and I spoke about this. The district office, they've got a good thing going. They've got a great relationship. You walk in there, everybody's happy, everybody's smiling, they're supportive. Not saying they're not supportive of, of everybody else also, but it's just different. How do we get it to feel more cohesive in our district?
I think right now, from the experience that I've kind of walked through over the last couple months, especially in, in just observing the board and the interactions with the board and, and individual board members, just the feeling that I, right now, it doesn't seem like the board represents the community. The, the community has showed up and asked them to do something, and, and the answer was no. And as a board member, I, I feel like as an elected representative of constituents that cast a vote, that's, that's who I would represent. And so, I, I need to be listening to them, and, and that's the voice that I'm representing as my position on the board. So, the decisions that I'm making, while I may have my personal decisions, I need to represent the constituents that put me in that position and entrusted me to, to be in that role. So, so I would like to see the board, the tenure of the board change, and that the board would represent the community, work with the superintendent, and lead the schools together.
Thank you. Amanda?
The thing that I would like to work on as a board member for the district would be community partnerships. I think that we have a lot of resources in our community, and a very supportive community for our schools, and our school district, and our students, and I would like to grow those relationships, specifically with the city of Pullman. We work very closely with them on transporting our secondary students, which is something that we're constantly trying to improve on. We also work with them on our Student Resource Officer, which is the police officer that helps with our schools, teaches the DARE program to the elementary students, as well as is present at the high school and the middle school. We just got a new Student Resource Officer, which is very exciting. He'll be starting this coming school year. We also are working with them on an interlocal agreement, which is the Parks and Rec Department uses a lot of our fields, and we would like to continue to grow that relationship, so that we are able to offer our community the space. Thank you. My time's up. Okay.
Dina?
Sorry.
If you could make one change in the way things are done at the board level, what would it be?
I think greater advocacy and representation of the families, the students, the teachers, and the staff. More engagement with those different constituencies, and building a trusting and engaged collaboration with those groups of people, and really creating more trust among all of them in order to collaborate and work for greater goals and achieve more.
Ben?
All right. Use a sports analogy here. Sometimes you want to pass the football, but you don't have an offensive line, so you can't pass the football. So, it doesn't matter how good your receiver is. And I think often with Pullman School District, as it currently is, it's, let's get this student to the fast teacher, and they'll run around the corner because they're fast, and they'll get the job done. Whereas if everyone just did a little bit less better, and you understand, well, hey, I'm going to hook the defensive ends because you're the left guard, and you're going to pull around me, and you're going to hit the outside linebacker. And then when everyone does what they're supposed to do, your level of achievement will be greater than the sum of the parts. But I think kind of there's limiting factors, it appears, and it's never the same limiting factor, but there's always some sort of bottleneck when you're trying to communicate or get something done. And I think just being a little bit more transparent, as transparent as possible as the law allows, there's no, there's nothing wrong with that. Yes, it could be a headache because you have to tell your constituents why you voted away or whatever, but that's kind of what we're all signing up for, I think.
Thank you. Brandon, you start the next one. What are the responsibilities of a school board member as compared to those of the superintendent?
So, I mean, I, I'm going to reflect back to my last answer. I believe that the school board is, is designed to represent the community and the constituents that elected them. They're a measure of accountability for the superintendent. The, the superintendent is brought in to lead the district, and to make hiring and firing decisions, and, and have, you know, the, control the organization. And, and I kind of see it as an hourglass, with the, the school board at the top, the superintendent in the middle, and the staff below. And so, he's making decision, the superintendent, he, she, whoever it may be, is making decisions, hiring, firing, and leading the organization. And then those decisions are approved by the school board, and the school board says yea or nay. And, and so, it, it is the, the board's responsibility to be talking with the community, invested in the community, understanding what's going on in the community, and what the community desires with their tax dollars, with their school district, because it is the community's district. It, it's not the superintendent's or any one person. It's all of ours.
Thank you. Amanda?
I believe that it is a team, the, the school board and the superintendent. The best districts are going to have the school board and the superintendent work together as a team to solve problems together. So, even though technically we are, the superintendent is, the school board's one employee, and we do hold him accountable for the choices that he makes, it's really optimal for us to work together as a team. Yes, we need to ask him questions. Yes, we need to understand why he's making the decisions that he's making. But ultimately, it's a team effort, and in addition to that, it is the school board's responsibility to write the policies of the district, as well as be sure that the district is following the policies that are written, as well as the district is following the laws of the state. And it's all to benefit the students ultimately. And it is also important for us to listen to and represent our constituents, but we have to use their feedback with the other information that we have to make the best decisions for the district.
Thank you. Dina?
School board members are the only ones that are democratically accountable to the public, and those people that vote them into their positions are the ones that they are accountable to, and it is their job to develop policies guided by each one of their constituents, whether it's teachers, whether it's families, students, or community members at large. And those policies are then implemented by the superintendent, and the superintendent is in turn accountable to the board members. But really, it's the board members that are responsive to the public.
Thank you. Ben?
Yeah, a bit of an echo chamber here, but superintendent can get the job with three votes. I don't think any of us would get the job with three votes. You, you have to, you have to be beholden to a few more than just three people to continue to have this responsibility. I'd be curious what kind of rubric we have going whenever these negotiations come up or whatever. And I, I don't know about that. I would like to know about that sincerely, because you don't know what you don't know. And when it's not transparent, you, you don't really know anything.
Stephanie?
School board members are the liaison between the community and the superintendent, but also they are there to listen to teachers, staff, everybody that works at the school With, and I love the, the guiding principle of our district, I would like us to not just say it, but show it in our actions more often, that students are first. And students will always be first. And that's a loaded statement, I know, but I would love to talk to any of you more about the feelings I have about that.
Thank you. I'm trying to decide. I don't think so. I don't think we have time for another question, so we're going to start with closing remarks, and we're going to start way at the other end with Amanda, and come this way.
Thank you. I would just like to start by thanking the legal women's voters for putting together this forum. I think that it's wonderful that there's a group that offers us this platform to be able to talk to the public. I have a lot of passion for this school district, and I would like to continue collaborating with my constituents, as well as the staff, and the administrators, and the families, and the students as well. I believe that students deserve a place where they have a voice at the table as well, and we've continued to try to grow that with some of the various groups that we've created over the years, which is very exciting. I know that there is room for improvement with our school district, and I would like to be part of helping to continue to improve how the, the education and everything else that we offer to our students. We're definitely facing challenges with our budget reductions, and that's just not Pullman, it's across the state, and it's nationally. And I would like to continue advocating for adequate state funding. It's decreased roughly 15% over the last four years. And I know that our enrollment is decreasing, but that's not necessarily a failure of the, of the district. It's WSU enrollment going down, and businesses closing, and we are free and reduced student families are increasing, and so, along with those community partnerships, it's also working with the food bank and the community. the Community Action Center and the school's food pantry to make sure that our students are getting fed so that they can come to school with a full belly, ready to learn.
I too would like to thank the legal women voters for inviting me here tonight and all of you and giving us this opportunity to engage together through this forum and, and with these other candidates. And thank you all for showing up. And I, and, and even those that are watching online now or might watch it later, I appreciate you too, being engaged in, in this democratic process. I believe that my time that I spent working at Wyman County, I kind of shared about that a little bit earlier, has kind of given me insight to, you know, the bureaucracy of, of government and, and how things operate. So I believe that I, if I was elected to this position, I'm kind of going in with eyes pretty wide open, understanding that there's going to be challenges and frustrations and, and things might not happen as fast as, as I might hope that they would or, you know, change. But, but I recognize that from the, from the front end. And I also recognize that I'd have a lot to learn in that role. I, I admitted that I, I'd take that training on parliamentary procedure in a heartbeat. But, but many more things. Legal aspects of it, I know that candidates are, are held to a lot of standards in, in what you can say and can't say once you're elected. I just hope that I've been able to give you a better understanding of who I am and what I stand for. I'm not a politician, I'm a parent. I'm invested in this community. I, I'd love to proudly continue to send my kids to Pullman Public Schools. I, I think it's a great place. I think there's amazing staff. If, if I had the opportunity to serve the district as a, as a school board member and, and maybe change the culture a little bit and, and make some change, I would welcome that. I'd be honored to have that role and to serve you all in that way and I'd just be honored to earn your vote.
So I knew, I can tell you where I was sitting when I was five years old and I knew that I wanted to be a teacher. I wanted to be a part of education. Some things have happened in my life. I'm not able to teach full time anymore, but I'm still involved. Like I said, I teach at WSU now. I've taught, I teach future teachers and I observe them. I'm in the schools every week. And honestly, it's so fun to watch the, the student teachers and the talent that we have that comes from the College of Ed because we're so fortunate to have WSU in our community and have these student teachers in our classrooms in Pullman Public Schools. They're amazing. But really, I go to see the kids and my former colleagues and the new ones too. They're great. I learn, I learn so much about teaching and academics from everybody. I want to be a part of the board because education is truly my life and I, I love to serve. I, I have the time, I have the energy, I think I have a different perspective being a former employee of Pullman Public Schools and a parent. And there's room for improvement all the time. I don't have all the answers, but I want to be a part of the board. I want to be a part of this group that works together because they also love this school district, they love students and they love the teachers and staff and want to support them in every way that they can. And if we don't have the answers, we're going to work together to find those answers and come up with the next plan that will hopefully be successful. Pullman Public Schools has always been looked at as one of the best in the state. I think we faltered a little bit over the last five to eight years or so, but we're struggling just like every school in the nation and, and in our state as well. So I hope that you would consider voting for me because I want to be here.
All right, while I went to college to be a teacher, I really love dirt. It's a lot more malleable. It's a lot more, you get your feedback, not right then, but you really reap what you sow, literally. And often in education, you also reap what you sow. And I think in Pullman's case, like Stephanie just said, if you say the last five to eight years, the direction might not be ideal, that's something that we'll witness and deal with not just today, but tomorrow and for the next few years. And, you know, obviously the pandemic happened and there's going to be an adjustment period, but that was also four and a half years ago. So how long do we say, oh, this is all the pandemic and the new normal and we're reacclimating? And at what point do you just steer the ship in a different direction? In farming, sometimes something happens that you've never seen before and all the old guys around have never seen it before and you got to figure out how you're going to solve the problem. And you get out your tools. You got a screwdriver, you got a hammer, you got a wrench, you got this, you got that. Maybe you got $7 wheat problems, sometimes you got $4 wheat problems. Currently, the district's kind of dealing with the $4 wheat problem, which means if the price isn't high enough, we can't fix everything we want to fix, but how can we make it do to get to the next time where maybe we have that $7 wheat? We don't have the 15% cut at the state level. Maybe the federal level's a little more smooth sailing. I'm kind of a hammer in the tool bag. I freely admit that. I can be abrasive, I'm honest and blunt. Generally speaking, I don't really care how I come across. It's more important that I come across and you understand that this is me and I'll do my best to understand where you're coming from. And it's why I often have holes in my jeans or my hair is a little all over the place. And for a lot of my life, I've had people in Pullman schools say, hey, you got to comb your hair, you're not going to get the job you want. Well, I have this long, beautiful hair and I have a job I absolutely love and I love education, but the dirt is not the same as a kid. And I feel like currently I can have a little bit of influence on the dirt, but I'd like to be in a position where maybe I won't have the direct FaceTime with kids, but you can put professionals in front of kids that can have that positive impact. And I think that would be essential going forward.
Everybody up here is impressive in their own right and I believe is really here for the right reasons, which is to improve the education and experience of the students in Pullman. I know that I would do a good job as a school board director. One thing that makes me different and may be important to you, may not be, I think that the school board needs to be reflective of the community as a whole. And that means lived experience, that means professional experience, that means engaging with people in the community, even the ones that are difficult to communicate with or to reach in general. And I think that's fundamental to really doing a good job in this position. And I think that's what differentiates me. I have professional experience in education policy. I have done quite a bit of work in education policy and government relations. And so I think I have the chops to do the work that is necessary and to go above and beyond and professionalize this position as well. And I hope that you keep that in mind as you make your decision. And thank you very much for your time. It has been a long time, so that's.
Okay. Hannah Martin. Martian sent a statement in and Sue will read it.
It's fairly swollen, I apologize ahead of time. I'm Hannah Martian, a proud two-time graduate of Washington State University, currently pursuing a PhD in education. And she's an active member of the Pullman community currently. I work at Neo Public Library as the Youth Services Assistant and as a substitute teacher in the Pullman School District. I've been grateful to spend time with many educators, students, families, and community members in my roles. I'm running to be a member of the school board because public education affects us all. It's the part, because of an invested community members, we should serve and work toward our schools to be better. I've received a well-rounded academic-based degree from 12K education. As someone who has lived in Pullman on and off for nine years, I care deeply about this community and the future generations that will inherit it. I'm vehemently anti censorship and am ready to combat rampant misinformation surrounding our education system. I can promise that I'll always show up for Pullman families, especially when hard choices must be made. I am not interested in playing politics or getting an ego boost from this position. Instead, I offer caring, thoughtful, unbiased viewpoint to the community that has given me so much.
Thank you. I would like to thank all of the participants of this forum, the people who are sitting up here answering questions and all of you in the audience who asked them and attended. So, thank you. If there is a topic we did not discuss, I encourage you to contact these candidates. They all have websites, they probably will answer you, so please, reach out. This forum has been recorded and will be available for viewing on our website in a couple of days. You go to l w v pullman.org and we'll tell you how to get the recording. Primary ballots will be mailed the 18th of July. The primary is the 5th. You can still register to vote if anybody hasn't done that. We actually have registration forms on the table in back or the QR code to take you right to W W the wa.gov and register online. You have till July 28th to register by mail or online, but of course, you can always go to Colfax and register to vote, even on Election Day. Also on the back table, we have copies of the Constitution, they're free, please help yourself, as well as our 75th anniversary, the League's 75th anniversary in Pullman, we printed out the They Represent You brochure, which is all the phone numbers, names of all the committees and everything in the county. So, please help yourself. Thank you very much for attending.